I'm gonna call the April 8, 2014 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. At this time, we have Mr. David Tripp with Seven Day Evangelist Church that come to do the invocation. Like for everyone to stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Wonderful Father in heaven, we're grateful for this day to be alive. And may your blessing be here with these folks as they decide things. May you give them patience and wisdom and tactfulness and kindness one to another. And may your will be done here. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's good to see a good crowd here at our meeting. We'll go right into the agenda. Is anybody here for citizens' time to speak on? The ordinances will come here in a few minutes. But is anybody here for citizens' time to speak on any other matter? Here are none. I'll close citizens' time. Next order of the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I make motion to approve minutes as previously.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion, any corrections or changes to the minutes? Here are none. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housen?
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstained. I wasn't here.
An aye. Motion passes five with two abstentions. Next order on the agenda is payment of invoices. I have motion to pay the invoices.
Move to pay the invoices.
And I'll second that.
Does anyone have any invoice they would like to discuss? Here are none. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
And the chair votes down. Motion passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing on ordinance 2014-01 Motor Vehicle and Trailer License Ordinance and ordinance 2014-02 Tangible Personal Property Tax Exemption Ordinance. Mr. Dalton, if you'd like to do a short presentation.
Yes, sir. May I? First public hearing will deal with the motor vehicle and trailer license ordinance of With County. The proposed ordinance will actually delete 2012-06 Motor Vehicle and Trailer Ordinance, which stated that all registered and titled vehicles would be subject to a $20 license fee on an annual basis and $10 for motor scooters, motorbikes, et cetera. The new ordinance eliminates all the references to titled vehicles and will only be for licensed vehicles. Very similar to the past, except the differences, the funds are collected with the taxes in December and no decal is required to be displayed.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hall, we'll have a, how many?
Well, we had one sign up sheet for both ordinances. So what I'll do is I'll call your name. If you want to speak on the tangible personal property tax exemption ordinance, just let me know. Or if you want to speak at both ordinances, you can let me know.
We'll have a time limit of three minutes for each speaker. And we'll open up the floor now for.
Okay. Our first speaker signed up is Mr. Joe Marshall.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
First, I want to thank you all for allowing the opportunity to speak before your meeting. And I'm sure if I heard Mr. Dalton a while ago when he was saying that concerning the titled vehicles, it is only licensed vehicles that will be.
Well, I spoke to the first one on the motor vehicle license. It is only registered vehicles that have tags on them that are subject to the decal or license tax. I was going to speak to the personal property exemption thing after this.
Okay. I'll get right to the point. My question is farm equipment. That's what concerns me. It has titles, it's never had a tag, never will have a tag. Will that be exempted? Will that be taxable as personal property and be required to get a county sticker included?
Well, we haven't made that decision. Now's the ordinance is written, all titled vehicles will be charged personal property tax.
Okay. That's what I have a serious objection to because we've got a lot of things. Yeah, they've got a title to them. Reason being, probably been financed sometime in their lifetime. As Mr. Hall wants to require, most financial institutions want to see a title, even though there's not a tag ever been involved, ever will be. That's basically what I object to, that part of it. I have no problem with taxing the personal vehicles and adding the county tag for that. That's fine. No problem with that. But when you get into farm machinery, I'd like that to remain as farm machinery. The farm use stuff, it's not been taxed, keep it as such.
Well, a motor vehicle is not, by the Code of Virginia, is not farm machinery.
Well, according to your thing, it said that anything used in production, farm production, why wouldn't it be? It's not tagged.
No. It's, a motor vehicle is not counted as farm implement. A farm implement, something that will till the soil, that's in the Code of Virginia.
It said in production of transportation. But these has never been taxed, the farm use vehicles. It's used strictly on for farm production.
Okay.
That's what I, that's my point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a suggestion? Maybe we let Mr. Dalton go ahead and make the presentation on the next one, too, because I think that we're going to have a mixture of speakers.
And just go both at once.
I mean, that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Dalton, you want to go ahead and explain the personal property.
I will attempt to. Ordinance 2014-02 Tangible Personal Property Tax Exemptance Ordinance of With County is really going through, as the county attorney explained to us, looking at the Code of Virginia. Virginia is dealing real estate that you can only do things that the state of Virginia allows you to do. It's going through the Code of Virginia and exempting things. And I'll read some of these exemptions. Won't read the whole ordinance. Currently, the way our ordinance is written, it is truly just a farm animals and machinery taxation that really wasn't clear of what could be taxed and what couldn't. The current or proposed ordinance, Article 4, actually exempts all household goods and personal effects and hereby define as separate items of taxation and classified as follows: By the code, bicycles, household and kitchen furniture, including gold and silver plates, plated wear, watches and clocks, sewing machines, refrigerators, automatic refrigerating machinery of any type, vacuum cleaners, and all other household machinery, books, firearms, and weapons of any type; pianos, organs, phonographs, and record players and records that are used therewith, and all other musical instruments of whatever kind; radio and television instruments and equipment; oil paintings, pictures, statuaries, curios, articles of virtue and works of art; diamonds, cameos, and other precious stones, and all precious metals used as ornaments or jewelry; sporting and photographic equipment, clothing, and objects of apparel; antique motor vehicles, as defined in the Code of Virginia 46.2-100, which may not be used for general transportation purposes; all-terrain vehicles, mopeds, off-road motorcycles, as defined in the Code of Virginia 46.2-100; all other tangible personal property used by an individual or a family or household, incident to maintaining and abode. All the classes of household goods and personal effects set forth, and I'm going to say above that I just read off in Section 4.1 of this ordinance, are exempt from taxation. Currently, With County has never exempted any of those. We haven't taxed them, but they've always been subject to that. So we're codifying that so that they will never be taxed forthwith. Article 5, exemption of livestock, grains, and agricultural products from taxation. 5.1, farm animals and livestock and grains and agricultural products are hereby defined as separate items of taxation and classified as follows: horses, mules, and other kindred animals, cattle, sheep and goats, hogs, poultry, grains and other feeds used for the nurture of farm animals; grain tobacco, wine produced by a farm winery, as defined in Code of Virginia 4.1-100; and no other agricultural products in the hands of a producer. Farm machinery and implements designed solely for the planting, production, or harvesting of a sustainable product or commodity, including farm tractors, farm utility vehicles, as defined in 46.2-100 of the Code of Virginia. Section 5.2, all the classes of farm animals, livestock, screens, machinery, vehicles set forth in the items I just read off in Section 5.1 of this ordinance are hereby exempt from the ord, from taxation. I think that gets to the subject of anything that's making, Mr. Marshall, your comment about producing. What that doesn't do, and the Code of Virginia has never allowed, according to the county attorney, personal pickups and that type of, to be exempt from taxation.
No problem with the personal part of it, but the business farming part of it, the personal vehicles, I agree fully with that. Trucks are used, trailers and wagons, silage in actual production, it doesn't do with personal use.
Like Tom Sylas and stuff like that.
Well, we'll hold it down to the public comments. We're not going to get any discussion out here amongst, in the audience. The next one, we'll let you come up and have your time at the podium.
So I guess if you want to speak on either ordinance, feel free to do that. If you'll let me know, though, if you want to speak on both ordinances, I'll extend the timeout for you, so you have time. Or if you just want to speak to one. And it might help the board if you just, if you kind of state which ordinance you're here to speak about, or if you're here to speak about both. Our next speaker is Jeb Huddle.
Yes, sir. The way I understand, y'all going to tax, or put a decal fee on all farm use vehicles?
No, sir.
Trucks? Silage trucks?
No.
No. The only, the $20 decal fee will be on registered vehicles.
Okay.
It will be as it's always been. The only difference is you don't get a sticker.
Yeah. Okay. But then you're saying that they will be on your personal taxes, though, you got to pay the.
Personal property taxes.
Personal property.
The $20 fee won't be, though. No, the $20 fee won't be.
But a farm tractor wouldn't be?
No.
Okay. I think it'd be a safety issue. If you're going to tax me on my trucks and stuff, I'll just get rid of it and just drive a tractor up and down the road. I mean, how safe that's going to be on 21? I mean, if a farm tractor is legal to drive on the road, I'll be driving it. I'll just sell all my trucks. And get out here and these tractor trailers going 60 miles an hour on 21, come up on you and pass you and go on a blind curve and hit a school bus full of kids. I mean, that's going to be on somebody conscious. Because a tractor ain't going to be doing no 55 miles an hour. So I reckon that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Huddle.
Karen, next speaker is Ms. Linda Meyer.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm very glad that you have changed this to licensed vehicles only. I have a serious objection to any tangible personal property tax, so I'm glad that's going to be taken care of also. And that's it. So I guess you're doing the right thing for change.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, William Funk.
I got a comment, Funk, on commercial vehicles. On commercial vehicle, most of them are going to road tractors. Okay, y'all going to tack it, but county sticker on road tractor and the crowbar, that's the same as a unit. So you don't get both on a tractor and the crowbar, too, or just one on a commercial vehicle. Now, these other states don't have commercial vehicle county sticker, because you pay enough on commercial vehicles, I should pay a highway or juice tax, you pay every mile that you run in state of Virginia, or the other states. So then you don't tack enough county sticker on tractor and the crowbar, which is the same on unit. So every crowbar that you got, which is not got crease crowbars, you don't tack it, everyone on county stickers, on everyone in crowbar, but the crowbar don't say in With County all the time. They go different counties, they set, most of the time. Just when crease time comes, then we're using. Other times, they set. So you still don't charge me a county sticker on these vehicles. So that amounts up over money on each crowbar that's setting and not being used. So I don't think, I don't think that's right. So that's the comment I got. Then you pay part to part tax on top of it every year. So you can't operate on that. You got enough taxes where it is, time you pay a 2290 form on each road tractor, then put every mile that you run, then you pay a part to part tax, which I ain't fussing about part to part tax, I pay here. But I don't think the county sticker ought to be on each vehicles, each one of them. And then also, I don't think you ought to go back to the county sticker, simple reason why I said that, because most of these county sticker, if I was a green box wise, if you dumped a green box, you're going to have a county sticker for you dumped. Okay? If you don't have a county sticker, no matter ever a county could dump that waste at the green box. So I don't think that's right. I think that will be changed back to the way it was. So that's the only comment I got at this present time. Thanks for your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Funk.
All right. Our next speaker, Mr. David Sharitz.
Good evening, Mr. Sharitz.
Good evening. My name's David Sharitz, and I'm a farmer in With County. And basically, I'd like to see you make an exemption for farm silage trucks. They're just used once a year for a couple of weeks. They are used solely in the production on the farm. And the same thing would apply to these titled cattle trailers and hay trailers. All we use them for is production. You know, we're not using them any other way, and it's just simply part of our farm operation. And I'm not, I have no problems with the pickup trucks, you know, the personal property tax on pickup trucks. But I feel like these old silage trucks that sit around and are run maybe a month out of the year, they're set up specifically just to haul silage. You know, that's the way that the bodies are built on. Same thing with cattle trailers, set up strictly to haul cattle. And we use titled trailers just to haul hay with, maybe move some of our machinery to the hay field. But I don't think that they ought to be included in the personal property tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharitz.
Tammy Sharitz.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions at this time. I think everything that I was concerned about is already addressed by others.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. David Blessing.
Hey, how you doing? Good evening, and I thank you for the time and opportunity to speak. Gina told you up, yeah, Hillary wasn't going to speak. Like a lot of politicians, I guess. But anyway, ain't no politician. But what I want to address y'all with is the personal property tax on the vehicles that's not tagged. And my understanding is that if I got vehicles sitting in my shop there, just like I told you before, that don't have no tags on it, I'm not bothering nobody's roadwayes, nothing that's sitting in my shop, and I think they should be exempt. And then again, I think you're picking on the farmers, I really do. And you got to remember, Tim, when you go to the grocery stores, when you get stuff off them shelves, realize where it comes from. The state of Virginia, the way I understand it, has give these farmers that exemption. And if I own big enough farm, and I wanted a brand-new pickup to put me a hay bed on it, or whatever I want to do with it, I don't think the county should come in here and override something the state of Virginia give these farmers. And on the other hand, Tim, these people that is misusing these farm tags, I think that should be up through our deputies and to the state of Virginia State Police in order to police this. Tim, I just called down here, Bob Huff, down here at Huff Ford, just a while ago, and I want you to listen to this. I can go down there, according to Brad King, which is one of the finance managers down there. He says I can go down there, he says I don't know about the new vehicles, but if I come down there and bought me a used vehicle, Gary, if I want to pay cash money for that thing, he hands me a bill of sale and the title, and he said, I don't care if you burn it. Now, I don't know what the laws is, but he said that's what their dealership can do. Always, if you misuse, misuse in this here tag, it's going to continue to be misused. If you've got a 99 vehicle or an 85 vehicle, only thing you have to do, Joe, go down there and turn the title in DMV and say, I no longer own that vehicle. But what I'm trying to say, you all are stepping in on people that's trying to do right in order for the other people that's misusing the tags. And if we need money, we need to go somewhere else. Four years ago or five, we come down here, we had a surplus of money. You know, you was going to hire the lawman, and the people throwed a bunch of racket over that. That didn't go through. But, you know, it's a shame to say, if you're once a crook, you probably going to always be a crook. And we're going to beat the system. And I don't think you should punish me or anybody else that's trying to do right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave.
That's all the speakers we have that have signed up.
Does anybody else would like to speak to any one of the ordinances?
I didn't see the paper that signed up later. I appreciate.
Would you please give your name and address?
My name's Bob Waller, and it's 157 Purnee Hill Road, Ivanhoe. I have two questions, and maybe I misunderstood all this, but I was told that, say I had an old car that I junked years ago, and it's in my name. Am I going to pay $20 on this car every year? I don't even know where it is.
No, sir.
That's all I want to find. Also, I heard that you might start taxing or putting a county ordinance on an old piece of equipment you have used on your land, and you go by the weight of it. Is anything to this?
No.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's a gentleman there. Give your name and address, please.
I'm Don Alexander. I live here in Withville, 190 Eagle Drive. I just would like to speak beyond what David Sharitz has indicated relative to the farm trucks that are being used for silage. I believe that we need, and if I'm wrong in interpreting that a tax, personal tax would be enforced on unlicensed vehicles by the changes that are being made, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, like, I apologize for being dressed like I am. But the reason is I was out with a couple of the other farmhands moving equipment, and one of the pieces that we were using to move the equipment was a farm truck that's no longer very suitable for road use. Nobody uses it for their transportation to and from work and so forth. But it runs around the county. We've got operations at a variety of places. And that truck, just to me, doesn't seem like it needs to be taxed. It's hard enough to make it farming as it is. And there's, you know, a few other trucks that have farm use, and I don't know if we need to have some kind of exemption form or something like that that could be used. Or the best I would think would be if the vehicle is not registered for a tag, then that it would not be taxed as it is currently. Appreciate you giving me a chance to speak and apologize for being late. I've gotten signed up ahead of time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Does anybody else wish to speak on the ordinance?
Tim, can I ask a question?
Yes, Fay.
I'm confused by the part of the ordinance, 5.2. It says all the classes of farm animals, livestock, grains, machinery, vehicles, et cetera, set forth in this Section 5.1 of this ordinance are hereby exempt from taxation. Is that correct, the way that's written? Because it's got vehicles in there. So.
Well, I mean, we're just having a public.
I know, but I'm just saying, is that, I just wanted to ask if that was correct in there.
Well, I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Here it is. That's what she's talking about. On the packet, it's page 48.
I think we're talking, Section H talks about farm utility vehicles. Section 5.2 was just saying all of the above, farm, livestock, and vehicles described above are exempt. So that's why I'm saying that.
But that's just talking about the vehicles that's listed above. It's not talking about motor vehicles as far as pickups and stuff.
If I may ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Horne.
If I have a backhoe, and I'm not a farmer, is it subject for taxation? But you just told that man, Mr. Waller, that it was?
Do you mean we just?
I didn't hear that.
Would you mind speaking more question, Bob, about the old, the equipment sitting outside?
He said farm equipment.
He's like me, he's a farmer.
No. But I mean, like I said, I asked a question about the titles. I mean, I've probably got cars that got rid of 20 years ago, may still be my name. I have no idea what they are. They're probably scrapped. Anyway, I heard I was going to pay $20 because the title's still in my name, and the car is gone. That's the question I asked.
The $20 license fee is only on registered vehicles?
That's all I got tagged on.
But you also would ask about, you thought that you had, were going to be taxed by weight?
That's on an old piece of equipment, like I use on the road or on my land. And I was told that I might be taxed by the weight for this old piece of equipment.
I don't know anything about weight.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's just what I was told. I don't know. I heard this, you know. And that's what I was asking about. It's like saying, I've got an old load that weighs eight ton. You're going to charge me so much a ton? That's what I heard. That's what I want to make clear.
No, we haven't discussed anything about charging so much per ton.
Well, I mean, how would you charge tax on something like an old machine like this? How would you tax it? What would you do about it? That's what I was asking question about.
Well, that's up to the commissioner of revenue, whatever she values it at, is what it would be. be taxed.
That's what I'm saying, it's more or less junk, but it will run, like you'd on a place just to work on the road, something like that, you know, it's just, not an old person piece of equipment.
I always said it's what will be taxed. The commissioner revenue actually assesses it.
That's what I wanted to know, because I thought it was going to be a new law change and what they would come around and say, yes, an old loader, it weighs 10 ton, we're going to charge you $50 a year for this, for the weight. That's what I wanted to make sure. May I make myself clear what I'm talking about?
I think what you're saying is, if you have a piece of equipment, is it exempt or is it not exempt?
Anyway, it's an old piece of equipment, just an old personal piece I use on my land, you know, just whatever. And I was told that I might be charged by the weight of it, not by what it's worth, by the weight of it.
If it doesn't have a title to it...
It no title to it. It's no title to it.
The way I understand it, I mean, what he's asking is, yes, he would be taxed on that piece of equipment because he's not a farmer, but it would be based off of the value.
But I do have land, I'm not a farmer, I've got land, I'm a farmer.
Right.
But it would be based on the value of it.
But it would be based...
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure.
Yeah.
It would be based off the value of it.
It would be taxed as a piece of, like a tool.
A tool.
But not a weight or anything.
No. Fay, Fay isn't in a percentage of the original cost.
That's right.
And it gets down to, gets down to just...
Gets down to almost nothing.
That's...
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So you're trying to say, like, a heavy equipment, say, if it's a normal dozer, it's going to be taxed, or it'll be exempt?
Do you want it already taxed?
Yeah, you're already taxed on it. You're supposed to be.
Should be.
Fay, help him out there, will you? Maybe Fay needs to see you. David, come up to the podium.
Tim, I know I done spoke one time, but I forgot to leave out, I don't know what your adjoining states like North Carolina, Tennessee, South Carolina, any foreign else, if I go buy a vehicle off of them, I'm sure if I go buy a vehicle off of them and pay them cash money, they'll probably just hand me the title. And that's what I was trying to say, and I hope you all look into that, because still yet, we are the ones that's going, the ones that's honest and trying to do what's right. We're the ones that's going, and still yet.
Well, you know, everybody pays personal property taxes that, the ones, right now we've got people running farm tags on vehicles out in county that's not paying no tax whatsoever.
But, Tim, as I spoke before, if I go buy a vehicle and somebody hands me the title, you know, I don't know whether it's required by law that I got to turn that title in, if I neglect not to turn that title in, you've not got no record of that.
No, we won't be able to tax it either.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say. Then why are y'all coming down on the people that's honest?
Let me have a chance here, will you? David?
Yes, sir.
I enjoy talking to you.
I enjoy talking to you.
You're a pretty good bear hunter and a fair turkey hunter. You know there are services the county has to pay for.
I know that.
The commissioner and the treasurer play a part in that.
I know that.
I think everybody in here has a piece to speak. I mean, you wouldn't be out here tonight if you didn't feel hard about it or feel about it. I imagine that most folks in here are landowners. I've told you all along, I'm not going to vote unless we collect the taxes that are not being paid. I will not vote for a land tax increase. That's what this is really about. The county has to have so much money to keep the schools open. We have to have so much for social service. Now, the choice here for the board is, we get these unpaid taxes, or we raise the property tax. Now, anybody in here wants to raise property tax, raise their hand. We can raise the property tax, that's what we do, but nobody on this board wants to do that. We have some numbers created by the treasurer's office that there might be as much as three, four to, three to $400,000, or maybe as much as $800,000 that's not being paid. Now, the silage trucks are an issue for maybe 150 silage trucks in the whole county. If they're worth less than so much money, you don't get a tax ticket. Is that right, Ms. Fay? Okay?
Somebody's asking this question.
If something has less than a certain value, you don't send a ticket anyway, is that correct?
The only reason we sent a ticket this past year was for the license fee. If it's under $1,000, we, in the past, we have not sent a ticket.
And that's not going to change. Now, the license fee is the first issue that I hope everybody's understanding. We're mixing two issues here, David. About this buying without a vehicle, the information you've got's exactly right. There's no law that says you have to title a vehicle, it's only if you got to go talk to a banker or a finance company, they want to have their name on your title. We're all aware of that at some point. But there's any law that's going to have some loopholes in it. You're exactly right. If you want to go buy a vehicle and take it out and burn it up, then you'll deal with the EPA and the EQ for polluting air, but you're right about that. But the real question here is, where do we get revenue without beating up on the landowners anymore? Now, you got any ideas? I'm willing to talk to you.
Joe, I agree with that, but when I worked for Yeller Freight, we didn't go to them and say we needed more money. They said, working out with what you got. And, you know, I don't know what your financial means is, but why, four or five years ago, you had a surplus of money? And we still got a surplus of money?
We maintained.
You know, we have, what happened to them?
I have no idea.
I mean, why don't you give each one a public record of what's going on with their money? I don't know, Joe.
It is, it is a published record. Everything this county does is online, Ms. Mars knows that, she picks issues.
I think so scared to give the people, what, a half percent this year? Why didn't they go up there and say, hey, we need 10 percent, I can't make it? We make it with what we got? I don't know, Joe, but what I'm saying, Joe, you still, you're not going to get these people that's running these farm use tags unless you police them. And whatever the judge does with them, Tim, you said the judge wouldn't do nothing with them?
Well, they, you cannot just go out and stop a vehicle that's got a farm tag on it unless you've got probable cause to stop that vehicle.
Well, why are y'all... And the farm tags are being probable cause.
It's not probable cause.
Well, why are you all overstepping the boundaries of the state of Virginia, giving these people this...
Well, hold on, right there, Dave, what code are you quoting?
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Actually, Dave, the state of Virginia gives localities the option of exempting those things like tractors and stuff like that. There are counties in Virginia who do not exempt any farm equipment at all.
Well, now, Gary, who give the, like, the farm use vehicle tag? You know, like, if I get a truck and I just want to run it up and down the road, farm use tags on it, who give me that right?
Well, it gives you rights, you don't have to register it, but don't give you the right not to pay personal property tax on it. Personal property tax is what you own, it's your personal property. It's not because it's a, it's, you're driving it on the road or anything, it's your personal property.
I still don't agree with you, because, Joe, these people that wants to run these tags is going to continue to run these tags and not pay no taxes.
Well, you're probably right, there'll be a few. Hopefully, the sheriff's department...
But Steve, you're coming down on the honest people.
Well, the honest people are right, they're the people of 91%.
And who do y'all go to? You don't go to the drug dealers and do more to them. You do not go to the cruts and do more to them. What do they do? Let them out of jail, clap their hands, Martha Stewart probably made more money when she come out before she went in. I mean, that's our judicial system. But it always comes back on the people that's paying the taxes, and y'all know that.
Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about, David. 91% of people in With County pay their taxes. That's a number Sam gave us. Why is it fair for those others to not pay?
Because...
They're freeloaders, David.
Exactly right, but that is exempt that they, that Virginia give the farmers.
Well, no, no, they didn't give it to you.
You didn't, that Virginia give farmers exemption of motor vehicles.
Who give them the rights to run up and down the road with farm use tags? Did the county give that?
That still don't give them exemption for not paying personal property tax on it.
Hey, I tell you one thing, I know you're going to do what you want to, we been down here before, been down this road, but I'll just want to make my spend and tell you, and, you know, that's all we can do.
There's 30,000 people in this county.
Right.
And we have to sit up here and we have to make it fair for every citizen in this county.
I know that.
I'm a farmer.
Yeah.
You know I farm.
Yeah.
I choose not to put farm tags on none of my equipment. I run regular tags because if I want to use it for something besides farm equipment or anything on the farm, I can use it.
Right.
But that's my choice. But, you know, I'm not down on the farmers, but, you know, things go up. Everybody knows out here in the county...
They're right.
That the cost of living, the cost of operation, and everything goes up. You know, things can't stay the same.
Exactly.
We, we're trying to make sure everybody is paying what everybody else is paying here in the county.
Tim, you know what? You just keep forcing people into it. Just like the water, and I hate to bring it back up again, that's another, somewhere it's been getting it all, with me and you and the rest home together, I'm still going to argue with you, Joe, that it's not right.
And like I said, David, you can call me anytime, and I'll talk to you anytime.
I appreciate it.
Dave, let me, let me address one thing that you, you did about, about, I know, you know, the truck you're talking about, where it says antique vehicles is defined in the Code of Virginia 46.2-100, which may not be used for general transportation. An antique vehicle is defined this way. It means every motor vehicle is defined in this section, which was actually manufactured or designated by the manufacturer as a model manufactured in a calendar year, not less than 25 years prior to January 1st of each calendar year, and is owned solely as a collector's item. So you've got an old vehicle that you're just keeping as a collector's item, according to this, is exempt from personal property.
But then again, it all comes down to the money, really, y'all ain't worried about who's running the farm use tags?
Oh, yeah, after the money, Dave.
Exactly. Thank you. You have to do the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what about, what about these thugs out here running up and down the road, nobody's policing, and hit some innocent people, they ain't got no insurance, they got nothing with a farm use tag?
I know you're a retired gentleman, but Doug's looking for help. Go up there and volunteer, go to school, and we'll give you deputy's badge.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, the judge would have plenty of, plenty of things to do, and I think that's... He wouldn't be drinking coffee. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Dave. Yes, sir.
I've got a question. Is that this farm machinery in Athens, isn't that a very general term that can include, it can include these trucks and stuff, the way it's worded?
The Code of Virginia specifically states that motor vehicles is not farm implements. It's not. A farm implement is something that can kill the soil. That's what the Code of Virginia says.
I said the farm machinery.
Machinery.
Designed solely for the planting, production, and harvest.
Yeah, there's a...
That's still very general.
Well, pickup cannot plant corn like a corn planter.
Then the harvest can end up...
Can it pull a silage chopper? Or...
Wagons.
Pull a wagon.
Wagons, right, wagons.
But it's still, it's still not classified by the state of Virginia as a farm implement.
Well, I call it an implement, I just call it farm machinery.
Well, it's not farm machinery either. It plainly states what a motor vehicle is in Code of Virginia.
It's not, not used for the general highway, transportation, like the emergency transportation out of town. And in response to Mr. Hailstone, he said 91% of the people in county pay their taxes, that's good. Why not put more everything collecting from the other nine instead of adding more on to us?
That was a question. Part of that bunch that's out there is not on the tax rolls as they are today, and that's what gets them to pay their fair share, is this ordinance.
Okay, I'll let you come up and speak, and we're going to wrap this up.
All right. Like I said, they beat around the bush on this one.
Would you give your name, would you give your name and address?
Robert Waller, 380 Shiggy School Road.
Thank you, Mr. Sharitz.
Evening, Joe. Now, they've asked everything and everything. They've talked about the antiques, they went through, we went through every piece of farm equipment God's ever created or helped create, put it that way right there. Don't care. I'm all for it. Farmers can do what they want to do on that deal right there. I'm a different category. I pull up antique cars. I have antique cars, have antique cars in my garage, have antique cars outside my garage that are titled in my name. What I want to know is, you going to tax me on what's sitting in my garage or outside?
Well, Mr. Hausman...
Because it's titled in my name.
Well, Mr. Hausman just read...
Well, see, I'm just making sure that you said it was, it's done away with.
Well, let me read it again. Antique motor vehicle, and this is the definition from the Code of Virginia, section 42, 46.2-100. Antique motor vehicle means every motor vehicle is defined in this section, which was actually manufactured or designated by the manufacturer as a model manufactured in a calendar year, not less than 25 years prior to January 1st of each calendar year, and is owned solely as a collector's item.
Okay, so in other words, as of what they were trying to do a year ago, it's not going to happen now?
Yeah, that, the first ordinance took care of that.
In other words, that's what I'm saying, so in other words, I don't have to worry about that now. In other words, what I have legally tagged on the road that I get inspected every year, pay insurance, that I'll pay taxes on. But my antiques that I drive casually that are tagged...
Well, okay, now, the ones that, that are tagged, this thing says that antique motor vehicles is defined in Code of Virginia 46.2-100, which I read to you, which may not be used for general transportation purposes.
Just once or twice a year, two or three times a year, pleasure?
Well, actually, and in all honesty, that, that designation is, and, Ms. Parker, I'm not putting pressure on you, but that designation by law is through the commissioner revenues office. All we do is, you know, is, you know, set tax rates and exemptions and that sort of thing, and then...
Seventy-year-old car, I mean, what you going to do for it? Like I said, I have regular antique tags, 70-year-old tags, legally and insured.
It is exempt.
So it is exempt.
From the taxation. Is he asking about the license fee?
Well, license, I've done that once. It's a done deal. They're permanent tags, they cannot be taken off, they're with that vehicle till it's gone. But anything else that I, the way I had been told earlier, prior to this new year, that this following year coming now, they were going to tax me on what I had sitting in my garage I was working on, and what I had sitting outside my garage that I had for parts. They were, because it was titled in my name.
You were talking about the $20?
Yes.
Yes, and that...
My personal property.
Right, and that is, this, this ordinance takes care of that?
So, what I have legally on the road that I drive every day, to and from work, still going to be my 20 bucks, which will be added on to my personal property taxes for next year. That's fine and dandy. I just want to see what it's going to do with my antiques and stuff like that. Had nobody said anything in this order about what I'm talking about right here, none. That's all I wanted to know. So in other words, what I have legally on the road now, I'll be paying my taxes on it like I have been doing for the last 30 years or whatever, that's fine and dandy. But what I'm working on and stuff like that, in my yearly car shows, the money that we could bring in from the cruise ends and stuff in With County, stuff like that, so I won't be paying taxes on them vehicles right there.
Not on antique vehicles.
Okay, so all we know. Thank you, General, for your time.
I'm going to close the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's nice to have a lively discussion. We'll consider your comments at a later, later date, and we'll, at another board meeting, we'll bring it up for a vote. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out.